Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, November 29, 2010. This evening, City Council, this being a fifth Monday, is meeting in special session. We do have a quorum with six of seven council members present. Of course, a special session's agenda is limited. On to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 5910 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29 Housing Regulations to require carbon monoxide detectors in residential rental dwellings and rooming houses introduced by all members of council. Member Coon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 5910.
Second.
This will require, as President Byas said, carbon monoxide detectors in residential rental dwellings and rooming houses. They will be required near sleeping areas. This goes into effect January 12, so that gives landlords ample time to purchase them. I did want to mention, though, that, as everybody on council knows, we received an email from Jack Arbuthnot, and the mayor received one as well. He had concerns, and I believe we have previously-
Addressed.
-addressed those concerns.
Motion and second to serve further discussion. Yes. Number four.
I think that with the comments that we've gotten, something that I'd like to address is renters cannot go and put in their own carbon monoxide-
Detector.
... you know, detectors when they move into a house. So that kind of gives some protection for people who don't have a lot of protection when it comes to these sort of things. I had a class this quarter where three of my students were out because of carbon monoxide poisoning. So it does happen. Why do we not require people who own houses? Part of that is because we don't have the capacity to be able to inspect those that we do. And I think that it just gives more protection to people, because I know if somebody went in and put a carbon monoxide and tacked it on the wall, they'd probably get in trouble.
Member Bain.
One of my constituents called and talked to me about an experience he had had with it, and I told him I'd add it to the record, although he wasn't necessarily against it. But he said that he had new property, he remodeled, and he installed one in the house. And he said, "The people who rented the house were barbecuing on the porch, and of course, the windows were open, and the carbon monoxide detector went crazy, and of course, they promptly called their parents." You know, that's where they started to say, "My goodness, I thought we had..." Anyway, so the parents said, "Get out of that house right now and never go back." And, you know, it was a pretty messy scene, and I guess that helicopter parents are with us to stay, that hover over their kids. But I think that under the circumstances, it's perfectly understandable how, in the middle of summer, your carbon monoxide detector would have gone off. So Larry, I talked about it. He wasn't against it, because he had it in his house. The other thing I would say is there's a certain limitation on this that comes from the placement of outlets, right? Because they're battery backup electrical-
Right, you plug them in and-
Right, and some of the houses, I think, have very limited numbers of outlets. And that's an additional reason why I think we needed to wait until 2012 to implement it. Maybe the code officers could look over places with people when they're doing their reviews and make some comments on where they could put it. I don't know. It's worrisome, because we're sort of betwixt and between, and that'll give us a chance to get a better placement, perhaps. But anyway, he's for it. I mean, people have been pretty much for the concept.
Member Butler.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, one comment I had as well in supporting this legislation is, although maybe the technology isn't 100% perfect, and maybe the legislation doesn't cover everything, I feel that I don't see the harm in us erring on the side of caution when it comes to protecting people. So that's my thoughts on this issue and why I'm supporting it.
Anyone on this side? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. And frankly, I think council just passed something that probably has more real effect on safety, given the commercial property out on East State Street, the people were terribly injured. I'm very pleased that this passed. Ordinance 10710 is an ordinance authorizing construction of Phase 1 of the Northwest Bike Path Extension from the West State Park and across the Hocking River, which is project number 255. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption of 10710.
Second.
And this, as described in the title of it, will be for an extension of our bike path in the West State Street Park area, and the cost will be about $120,000. And we will be reimbursed for portions of this with a grant through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources.
Further discussion. Member Butler.
Thank you. I would just like to add that I think this is, again, one of the jewels of our communities to have extensive bike trail system and access to outdoor recreation, and I strongly support this measure.
Other comments? Mayor Wile.
I'd have to agree. This extension will take us over the river at another point, exclusive pedestrian and bike trail, so to speak, unlike other bridges where we have to share the road with vehicles. It is an extension of, hopefully, an extension that will take us eventually link up with the Moonville Trail if everything goes well. That's way in the future. I know the Athens Trails and conservative people have gotten some land going to the east of us on the trails as well. One of the earmarks of this, of course, is not only recreation, but eventually transportation, uses as a good corridor for transportation. And you can't fault it for, actually, if people use it for transportation, the health factor that goes, improvement of health that goes with this. So it's a good start. It will, as I say, bridge another jump across the Hocking on the west side.
Further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 10710 is passed. Ordinance 10810 is an ordinance amending ordinance 08010, authorizing design engineering of the Oxbow Bridge, which is project number 247. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption of 10810.
Second.
This is to amend an ordinance passed earlier this year, and that original ordinance was for $200,000. The auditor then found that there was some earlier work that had been completed for this particular project to the amount of $19,500. What we're doing is amending the original ordinance from $200,000 to $219,500.
Further discussion? All in favor? None. Opposed? Ordinance 10810 has been adopted. Now on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 11410 is an ordinance declaring a forfeited vehicle no longer needed for a municipal purpose. Ordinance 11510 is an ordinance amending ordinance 5810, declaring certain buses no longer needed for a municipal purpose. Ordinance 11610 is an ordinance authorizing an inter-fund transfer and amending the 2010 appropriation ordinance. Mayor Wile.
I would like to request a second suspension, if possible. I just got a request to increase the PO for the transit, and I think the reply back is this was to be... The assumption, I think, that this is on third reading. I had the last email that went back and forth between the auditor's office and my office. But it's on second, so we want to get that bill-
Member Coon, if you're willing to move for consideration of 116 under suspension, then we will consider that debate.
I move to consider ordinance 11610 under suspension of the rules. Second. And the reason for the suspension is-
We want to pay a bill, and we need to move some money into that fund line.
Is there further discussion on suspension only? I don't have a copy of it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinances have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance 11610.
Rules have been suspended, yeah. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I misspoke. Excuse me. Do we have a second? Second. Motion, second, to adopt ordinance 11610. Further discussion?
Well, let me, you know, explain why I requested this. We have our McDonald Transport invoiced, and it's sitting on Charlene's desk, and she was saying, "Okay, I need to get this voucher passing. I need to move some money into the fund, that particular PO." The response from Kathy's office was, "Well, as soon as this gets done, we can do that." So we could wait another two weeks or a week, I guess. Is that what we have next?
No.
But the idea is to clear this one out as fast as possible, so we can get ready for the next one. Go ahead.
I don't have a-
Member Sands.
I don't have a copy of it with me either. How much, what are we talking about?
Well, this was to transfer from the General Fund 101... Wait a second, okay, wait a second. Section 1, the appropriation, to change the appropriation and amend the appropriation order 10509, $100,000 to the General Fund TC Class 600 for transfer, increasing appropriation by set amount. Section 2, auditor is hereby authorized to make the following inter-fund transfer: the General Fund 101 to the Transportation Assistant Fund, $214,000, and 101 to capital improvements, $850,000. This is for adding to the fire truck. That's not in a hurry, but the other one is, okay? And then the section 3, appropriation ordinance 105, is further amended to appropriate on the unappropriated balance, some $57,000 to the Transport Assistant Fund, $214,000 TC 300 for the transit system. And the next section, of course, is from the $200,000 capital improvements, $58,208,53259, designated fire truck, ladder truck. So those are sections right there. Does that help?
Yes.
So we put $100,000 into the transit system with the idea we're purging $57 for this year. They'll leave us some buffer for next year's bills. What is it, 43 left? And then we'll start the whole thing rolling again. Does that answer your question?
Other comments? We're up to adoption. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11610? Aye. Opposed? The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
On to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 11810 is an ordinance amending the 2010 appropriation ordinance. Member Coon.
Thank you, Mr. President. The 2010 appropriation ordinance is amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $15,000 to the General Fund Mayor 101.101, transaction class 100, to cover personnel salaries through year end, and $25,000 to General Fund Lands and Buildings 101.112, transaction class 100, to cover personnel salaries through year end, and increasing the total appropriations by set amounts. Mr. Mayor, would you like to explain that a little bit?
I guess somewhere along the lines, about a month ago, I got an email that had a bunch of things on it. At the back end of the email was saying, "We need to move some money into the personnel lines for the General Fund Mayor's Office and Lands and Buildings." As I say, there were other issues on the front part of the letter, so I ignored it entirely until, I think actually Debbie Walker mentioned the fact, "Are you going to do something about this?" And I said, "What?" So obviously, we had a shortfall. There was a discussion going on. I did not pay attention to it. It's just-
So we're not sure exactly what caused the shortfall? Why?
Salaries.
Why the salaries? It's just why?
What?
Why?
Why?
Just budgeting. Now's the time of year, I guess we look at that and-
But it's $40,000.
Right.
How could we be off by 25 in lands and buildings?
I do not know.
Could we know next time?
We could do that.
Thank you.
Anyway, yeah. I'm not the one that sent the email out, so we can wait.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Probably, if anything, I'd probably say it was overtime, but I'm just guessing at this point.
Okay.
Again, I wasn't tracking it. It was one of these things that didn't come through until it was perked up again at this point. And if I can, I'll try finding out where the numbers are coming from, and at that point, I'll also see if we can spend a second time around, if possible.
Okay, so thanks.
Well, if you look at the overall scheme of things, let's see, lands and buildings right now, this year is going to be $400,000, and the next year's budget, if you look at that, and the mayor's office is about $480,000. So being $15,000 off is not a big deal. We're talking about less than 5%. I don't like to see it. We've done this to recreation twice in this past year, I believe. We did it to streets, I think, once. Again, there's shortfalls that occur on that. Again, a lot of it has to do, I suspect, with overtime, but I couldn't swear on it.
It's a lot of money for overtime in the mayor's office.
Well, the other thing is if you were... We have interns. We've been using more of the interns, more or less during the summer, so I suspect that could be part of it. Although I'm surprised, because we went down to one intern during most of summer. So again, I'm not aware where that actually is, because I don't really can... I can't really follow. I guess I could follow it if I went through the next thing. I could probably track it down. If not, I'll get our esteemed daughter, her office, to track it down.
Okay.
Further comments?
Yeah.
Yes. Member four.
We've talked about how the next year's budget, you've been very conservative in establishing the pay and everything. So how can we account for this in next year's budget if... I'm just, to kind of do bookkeeping and housekeeping, you know, because if you underestimate or you're very conservative with your estimates, and this is bound to happen in some instances, I'd just like to see Ask Chris on saying, you know, this is above what you've estimated or-
Are you asking what the cost would come in?
Well, I think, you know, I think that when one is trying to be very conscious of what is going on with the budgets, and you're being very conservative with your budgets and your forecasting, that this is something that happens. And I'd like to see you guys kind of track it in the future. Does that make sense?
Okay. If you were to go through your month's reports, which you've probably got copies of, you'll notice that if you look at the funds lines, expense funds lines for any given month, you will actually see, in the regular TC 100s, for most interns, there's a zero number. The intern number paid is actually coming out of the regular wage. It's being moved upwards to fill that gap, whether you have interns or not. Patrick doesn't have it, the law director doesn't have an intern at this time. He actually has staffing for one, but he doesn't have filled, I believe. So therefore, really, it doesn't impact some of those. But the fact is, it's hard for me to set a... If I don't have a number in that line-
Right.
... it's hard for me to follow that decrease over time.
Right.
Now, you know, I haven't pushed it hard to say, "Let's put money in that and keep it tracked," because it's all coming out of the TC 100s. What also you realize is some... We still have shortfall. We took money out of the workers' comp. Workers' comp came in much lower, about 60% of what our estimate was last year when we put the budget together. So at that point, that money got soaked up real quick, too. So we actually, if you start looking and say, "How much did you divvy up and move around?" I can track hours on my office. I don't-
I'm not asking to track hours. I think that, you know, Councilmember Bain is saying, "Well, it's a lot of money to come out at the very end." But my comment is, this is, you know, on one level, it's to be expected with interns and all these sort of other things, when you're very conservative in the front end of what you think that you're going to spend. And I'd just like to know that you're tracking it through the year.
I follow.
Sort of, you know, I'm trying to give you some credit to get... Because you are being conservative in the very beginning. And I know interns are important, and so I just, I guess I just want to know that, to have some final bookkeeping at the end, to know exactly.
Well, that's actually, the auditor will do that. That's where we find out our carryover, how it looks one way or the other. Again, the bills take time to go, and TC 100s are fairly easy to track because there's no encumbrances. The other transaction classes are pretty... We've got, you know, I look at the... Every month, she gives me a list of all the checks, the POs that are out there. I stare at POs that were initiated January 19th, that sit there with the same funds in it. It's sitting there. It's going to be zeroed out by her, because you authorized her to zero that stuff out, you know, right? That was an ordinance that you did last two months ago. So you look and say, "That's been encumbered. Somebody wrote a PO thinking they were going to use it."
Right.
And it's at the bottom of somebody's drawer. Literally not at the drawer, because it's all electronic these days. But the fact is that there's a pocket of money there. It could be a slush fund, it could be something they thought they'd buy and they didn't buy. So tracking everything at the end of the year, actually, we know till all the bills come due and everything's paid out with last year's or this year's funds. I'm aware of what we're doing here, because we have-
I know you're aware. I'm just, I think that to give you credit for being conservative with the original estimate, you and Kathy both, and that is, sometimes it's to be expected that these sort of transfers will occur at the end.
Okay.
Other comments? Ordinance 11910 is an ordinance authorizing a stop-loss medical insurance contract and declaring an emergency. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this is an ordinance that we deal with annually. We all know on council, and most people know, that the city of Athens is self-insured with our health insurance. And one of the ways that we protect ourselves is through a stop-loss insurance policy, which simply says that if an individual employee of the city's medical bills exceed a certain limit, then the stop-loss insurance kicks in, and we don't pay those million-dollar bills. This year, our carrier, United Healthcare Insurance, with whom we've dealt for a good number of years, and our personnel director endorses staying with them, but they're offering us two options. One is to keep the current deductible at $75,000 per employee, and that would yield an annual payment by the city, $393,000. Or we could go for a slightly higher deductible, which is coming from the city now, not the individual, of $85,000. And that would yield a payment of $352,000, saving us about $40,000.
Or cost to us.
Yeah. But the recommendation of the personnel director at this time is to go with the increased deductible. So that's part of this ordinance that, as we discussed it, we all need to be aware that we will be going with that higher deductible.
Other comments?
But the ordinance doesn't say that, right?
It does not at this time.
It does not.
Does it need to? I don't think it needed to get down to that level.
But that was the discussion that we had.
Okay, so the safety service director could theoretically go for 75 if she wanted, then, right? Or is it going to be?
The service safety director is who enters into contracts.
Right. So I just wondered why we didn't put that in.
Because-
It's never been an option before. I mean, I remember Rick Abel came when we went from 50 to 60 and spelled it all out. We haven't had such a spell out.
Right. And we were just asked to have this on our minutes, so the discussion was had, and everyone's aware of it, and that's it. We will be voting on the stop-loss insurance policy. Yes, we do want it. No, we don't.
But the actual amount, you will say in the minutes, is the 85,000?
Yeah.
Any other comments? Ordinance 12010, I believe we're up to, an ordinance making the appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2011, introduced by Finance and Personnel Committees. Who wishes to speak?
I'll speak quickly, and then I'll ask some of our other officials here to follow up. This is the piece of legislation that engenders our end-of-the-year wait for this to occur, and then usually some special sessions or suspensions. We're going to cover this through three readings with special sessions this year. This is the budget for the year 2012... 2011, I'm sorry.
Don't get ahead of yourself.
Yeah, 2012 with this carbon monoxide, okay. This is the official budget for the city for the year of 2011. What occurs is the auditor makes some projections about our income for the year, and the mayor and the council and the auditor, again, needs to work on matching our expenses to that income. And we're broken down into several funds. One that we break out and look at most closely is the General Fund, because that is funded entirely by-
Income tax.
... by taxes and fines and other amounts that are coming in. And so the auditor suggests that we have about $11.6 million available, and the budget at this point matches that amount, 11.645783. And so-
How can we do that?
Let me ask Mayor Wile to speak to this. He spent a lot of time-
What do you... Okay. Essentially, what you're looking at is, I gave you one last week, 11.2. That was running about... The General Fund there was about 11.701. Basically, it's been bouncing forth, back and forth. If you were to look at the title of this, when it came back to me, it was Alternative Number 6, I think, from Kathy's office. A lot of it, again, if you look at it, you can see the breakdown, 80% is personnel, TC 100s, that first column in the General Fund. Those two are salaries. Some of it's been leaned back as much as possible. You'll notice there's no capital outlay in the 500 series in the General Fund. Everything's been pretty much moved down to the 580 line, which says capital improvements, about $682,000, which is not a lot. You realize 640 of that, we just passed, of course, is for the ladder truck. Actually, the budget I gave you in 2000, I mean, 1122, did not have that $600,000 in there. Somebody pointed it out to me, I think. Did you? I think somebody said, "Where's the ladder truck money?" Which is why I gave it to you last week, so you could see if there's any details that need to be put in there. The total budget, which last week you're complimenting me on it being $30 million, is now $30.1.2, before it was $30.9. So you can see where that $600,000 did make a jump. Again, we're still trying to put it aside, that money for the ladder truck. Conversation is with the fire chief, and we had a discussion about buying the fire truck, is that what we are quoting is state bids and the basic model. If you put all the tires and everything on it, it's about still $1 million. There are no real capital things in the streets or in the projects, because we had a little bit disconnect when we appropriated last year, where we put some of the money in there, then we had to go back and either add, appropriate more money for some of the stuff, like we just did for the Oxbow Bridge, design engineer went from $200,000 to $19,000. I think, Andy's trying another approach this time, he says, "Let's leave them out so we can appropriate them and authorize them at the same time." Because some of the things that would happen is that we'd appropriate the money, either we wouldn't appropriate sufficient funds or too much funds, very seldom too much, except for in case of the Brian Salt Lagoon, or we would appropriate the proper amount but not authorize the expenditure of. And rather than do it in piecemeal, we will come to you for the money and the project at the same time, to make it one flow. So that's why you're not seeing a lot of chunks of money in the capital outlay. Let's see, other things I should bring up, I guess, if you look at the left, right hand percent of total in the General Fund, you see the breakdown of the different departments in terms of what they cost. Again, what you're seeing, 29.8% of our General Fund goes towards police. 20.99% goes to fire. The next one after that is actually lands, no, wait a second, it's courts, and then lands and buildings. What I did is I petitioned all the different departments, "Give us your best bet of what you're going to need." What would happen is I'd look at their requests. Sometimes I'd give them straight on what they wanted. I'd look also at the expenditures for the year, how much we spent, how much we appropriated. I looked at revised appropriation that's in our system right now, which does not actually duplicate what's on the 15009, our original appropriation, because we've been doing appropriations all year long. I look at the percent encumbered and the percent expended at that time. And if it looks like they've done it all, they've spent it all, and they're asking for more, I have a tendency to go with their request. And this is just not only General Fund, but all the other departments, Recreation, Community Center. If it looks like they haven't expended it, sometimes I have a dialogue with them, saying, "Okay, so you want more money, and for what?" "Okay, so you want more money and for what?" There's usually explanations of what they expect, what they want, if they want an increase. Some are just, some departments will just throw in an extra thousand, just because they assume it's gone up. We don't know, the unknowns, of course, are energy costs. Gas, natural, gas and oil, natural gas and electricity are all the unknowns at this point. Some departments added a little bit to it, some did not. We have expectation of it going up. We are actually talking about trying to do an electrical aggregation with other cities, if possible. There's a company out there that will put it out to bid with us. If we go with other cities, too, we'll get a better deal. That's the conversation I've been having with them. So this is what we have. I don't know what more to explain unless you have questions. 11.645 million for general, 31.244 million for total, grand total. That's at the next page over. So I guess if there's more questions, I can go from there.
I'm just going to say that the mayor mentioned that he's been looking at purchase orders, some of which have not been expended, and the auditor's office will zero those out, and that what has not been expended will be classed as a carryover. And we're not, we won't know what that carryover might be till well in January, maybe even February. Is that correct?
So all the bills are paid, and we've closed the year out. But of course, tomorrow is the end of this month, and we expect to know more by the end of this week. We'll let you know what we find out by next week, but it's hard to predict. It's like with the salaries, sometimes we waited on purpose till the end of the year. You know, we can look at them in June and say, "Well, we might be a little bit short after Halloween and ask for appropriations," but, you know, nobody really knows until after it happens exactly what we need from year to year on some of those extras. As far as the salaries this year, Ray has spent hours and hours calculating and trying to get the 100s, which of course is the major part of our budget, is the salaries, personnel, accurate for next year, taking into account contract raises and things like that, which we don't know yet about the fire department. So that happens every year, too.
And remember, as far as we know, we're working with a fairly flat income level. Taxes are, our tax income is estimated to be level based on last year. So we really, that's why everybody has been very conservative about putting this together.
And I don't know, I guess you probably saw in the paper, I think it was the 19th of this month, there was an article in the Messenger, I believe, about OU's budget, and that their revenue was actually up from last year to this year from last year, mostly due to higher revenue, higher tuition, room and board, I think. At the same time, later in our article, they talk about that they're actually expecting a decrease in their personnel fund lines. In other words, they expect to spend less money on personnel. Now, the question we have quizzed them, of course, and sent a query to them, is, are you talking about all the campuses, or are you just talking about Athens? Because that would make a difference. Being the number one employer, when they come out with a statement saying, "We expect to expend less on personnel," that should be, you know, a little red light on our dashboard at that point, because we live off the income tax of all the employers, including them. So there are things that we, you know, we try anticipating. I think in the report that Kathy gave you on October 18th, I believe, was talking about maybe a 1.8 million carryover, of course. I think when we're looking, if we're lucky, we'll end up with a million. If we're not lucky, we don't know really at this point. And again, it could change with a snowstorm. So these are the issues right there. We have projects that are coming down the pike. We're going to spend, as you see, some money for our Oxbow Bridge. We still have slated somewhere along the rebuilding of Circle Drive, which should cost us nothing, but will cost us money to at least go in and out of it. This is, because it's an ARC grant, access road grant. That has to be scheduled eventually. I think this, I don't think we put out the bid. I think we're just doing the design on that. We still have wastewater treatment plant we're discussing. So we have some ticket items that have to be looked at, big ticket items, which will come down. You know, the report that Andy gave on his long-term projects gives you a skeletal work of that. We're probably doing some work on North Court Street, even though we didn't get to issue one grant on that, just to be able to fix the problems with the crossover between water and sanitary sewer and storm sewer. So we have projects that need to be dealt with eventually.
Further discussion on ordinance 12010. Ordinance 120110 is an ordinance authorizing staffing levels, a non-union pay scale, and slotting for fiscal year ending December 31, 2011, recilling all ordinance inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. Member Bain.
Mr. President, 120110 is, includes several items that we've talked about in committee. It also has some changes that we'll, I'll talk about as we go on. One of the first things I'd like to note is that many people have flat-line salary increases, but I've advocated strongly for an increase of 1% to cover new insurance charges at a minimum, premiums and deductibles. Up until now, we've had people who have only paid deductibles. We've had people who paid premiums and didn't have deductibles. And it seems in today's world, we have to get that organized and corrected. If I were God, and I'm not, I would have it done on the 1st of January, but that's not in the cards. But we're going to do the salary increases, and we'll also, in the same ordinance, cut positions that are unfunded, I mean, that are unstaffed, that are empty. So let's take a look at it and see what's going on. This is staffing levels and non-union pay scale and slotting. And those of you that are newbies in budgeting, you get a chance to look and see where council has at least some input. 2011, as you see, first page, flip it over. First thing you see is custodian, we're reducing, we're using an empty position and vacating it. As I said last time, the auditors reported more than 200,000 will be saved in the general fund and then some other funds as well by cutting these positions. Below it, a very sad thing for me, is cutting one patrol officer. I hate doing it, but to put a policeman on the road used to cost 75,000. That doesn't mean in a vehicle, it doesn't mean with a uniform on, and it doesn't, you know, in other words, this is a very expensive part of our operations, as the mayor mentioned earlier. So we've cut it. I hate doing it. I was safety before, and I don't like it at all. Same could be said for fire. One firefighter position is done, saving us 200,000. And then finally, last but not least, in the street fund, we have maintenance tech, trainee also being cut. Wait a minute, maintenance tech, maintenance tech labor going from 11 count to 10. So a total loss of four positions that were not filled. Luckily, right now, we do not have to cut positions with people in them, and I think that's pretty good. Okay, so as you can see, the department and the position and the fund that pays for them is listed on these, for those of you that are going to be doing this in the near future. And the FTE is there also. So we could see that, for example, in water administration, we should have a little bit of Ron Lucas. 10% of his time is devoted to water administration, just an example of how it works across the board. Likewise, Andy, although he's managed to sustain it very well, is split up among a number of funds. He doesn't even show that, does he? And then I've got to stop trying to be silly, but part-time and seasonal employees, this is where the interns are listed, and, you know, I'm almost thinking maybe we ought to just zero those out later, but maybe not. If they're in though, if they're in, okay. But we can't take, we can't, I personally feel, and Chris and I were probably saying the same thing, I don't think, we had a $60,000 surprise a year or two ago in the street fund. Now we had a $40,000 surprise. I, you know, we just can't have that next year, so we'll have to track it more. Also on that page, we have, and I guess that's not a council job, general police auxiliary officer, is that the request of the service director? We have a swap there. You can see communication officer down to one, auxiliary officers up to two. Okay, continuing on, then you can see on Exhibit B, we have a number of, sort of how much money you have in your budget allows you to hire people, and we have the minimum wage, so we don't have to change it every time it goes up. I hope it doesn't go down, but anyway. And $2 above, there it is. So you have the rates already spelled out, and there is flexibility. Actually, we changed that not too long ago, so there it is. Next thing, if we can see actually the pay scale for non-unionized employees there. And you have the various levels. You have steps, they're roughly 3%, and many people who are new are in the steps, and so they go in 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. We'll see later on where they are. And then you get to the midpoint. And those of you who are doing this at some future time, remember, between the midpoint and the max, unless we do something about it, there will be no change. So you absolutely have to remember that. They're out there, sort of in la-la land, and we have to give them, we have to provide an increase unless we want to flat-line them, and so they will never make the transition to the maximum level. They will never be topped out unless council takes action and increases salaries. And so what we've done is taken that, the salary between, for all people, between the midpoint and the max, and we've done two changes. First of all, we gave 1% increase for anybody in that, in that area between the midpoint. If we look at the top, recreation, maintenance is probably not the best example, but let's just look there, we're on Exhibit C, non-union pay scale. 1% on, if the person in that position, let's say a person has an hourly wage of $16.01, just for argument, if that person has longevity, that person will get 1%. If that person does not have longevity, that person will get 2%, so that they can eventually get up to the maximum. We have to remember, we have this dual system. We have to make sure we're just to the people who do not have longevity, the recent hires. We have to be vigilant about that, for sure. And then you can see the same thing happening down below, the distance between this. This is very similar to a system that's employed by Ohio University and other places. I've often wondered if, you know, we shouldn't look at changing it, but we aren't going to. So we have a number of people that were in that position between midpoint and topped out, and those are the people that will be getting a 1% in the case of longevity-based people, and a 2% non-longevity-based people. And so that's basically what we have here, and you can, and there's an additional one coming down the pike here. We'll talk about that in a moment. But first of all, I noticed you have elective officials. I gave you all a slip of paper, and for comparisons, and we will, in January to February, state the salaries that we expect to pay for mayor, auditor, law director. Treasures on a different scheme of it, we'll put that in, too. President of council, council members, those are all done by ordinance. They have to be done before the petitions are due, so we don't have so much urgency. So pay attention to that. Take a look at the handout I gave you. And then last but not least, we have the slotting of all the positions. And you can see, this would be those who are topped out versus the other people in the system, who are, like Jessica Aldine, you can see she's pay grade five, and some other people who are, you can go down the list and see where they are. Pool doesn't mean they work at the pool. Pool means that they are in, they're in this group of la-la land between the minimum, between the midpoint and being topped out. Okay? Is that clear as mud?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's the first reading.
By council members? Mayor Wild?
Two points. One, I wouldn't call it la-la land, probably. You could call it limbo or purgatory, your choice.
I was going to call it banana land.
And again, part of the thing is that we, over time, got rid of the longevity aspect of this. We have the unions, there's only fires, it still has longevity built in. I think Councilmember Bain pointed out many years ago, we were getting clobbered by that. We have a much tighter budget because the increases were pretty steep at the time. I will also point out that this is the non-union portion of it. We have three unions, or five, depending on when you parse it out, or four, depending how you want to, you know, as I say, divide it. They all set their own scale and their own rates. So this is what we're looking at as a non-union, the people who haven't unionized, who we are trying to accommodate as well.
And they often do the very important jobs, and they are always the one that we test things on. So when we get to the next ordinance, you'll understand why I'm doing it early, so they don't feel like we sprung it on them. Okay?
Other comments by council members? Comments from the audience? I'll ask you to come up to the microphone, and if you could state your name and your address or affiliation, and you're welcome to speak to council for up to three minutes.
My name's Glenn R. Goings Jr. I'm the president of 2403, which happens to be the two positions you presently have to cut. I understand that it's due to a lack of funds that we are cutting these two positions. Am I correct in that? Yes or no? Yes, ma'am. Okay. All my positions that I represent, I feel are very important. These two positions in particular, the first one being a custodial staff, these guys are run very thin. They take care of very, very many buildings, all the buildings. They don't just take care of one or two buildings. These guys, so you're going to eliminate one of those fellows. I don't know about you, but in the public side, I don't think a dirty restroom is something that we want to really throw out there. And I hate to be that explicit, but that's the way it is. As far as the street department goes, you know, public safety is in their foremost, too. You know, those guys will spend 16 hours straight behind a salt truck wheel. Done it myself, you know?
Thank God.
They're out for the safety of you folks. They're not out for their own safety, I'll guarantee you that. They'll do whatever they have to to make sure that you folks make it to work at 7:30 or 8 o'clock in the morning, and they're out there all night. So with that being said, I also would like to say, if you folks are going to cut in my budget line, I would like to see you cut in your budget lines, too. Like, for instance, we still are trying to hire a person at this point that is a non-contract employee, excuse me, that is a non-contract employee, we're still trying to hire. So if we're going to cut the pie, let's cut it even, I guess is the only thing I ask. And I just want to be able to be confident in whatever I tell the people that I represent that we are doing so. For another instance, I don't know how in-depth you get with each individual budget. We have a PO system, is that correct, Mayor? That's pretty freewilled, you know? If I run a business, and, or anybody else in this room did, and we gave 50 people, you know, a credit card, you've got to expect that we're not getting the best bang for our buck. As far as the street budget goes, we're currently building a salt bin. I'm very proud for those folks, they deserve it. But I'm also going to tell you that I think we should buy our salt in a non-peak time. I think we'll save enough money by buying our bulk in a non-peak time to justify keeping the position that it is. So with that being said, I do thank you all for your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Glenn.
Sometimes when we have hard times, we get the best ideas out, so write them down. Send them to your supervisor, Glenn, please.
We appreciate your comments. Mayor Wild?
The PO system, anything that's over 500 goes past me, gets put forward. So therefore, I'm tracking anything over 500. I usually trust the ability of the supervisor. The procedure, of course, is somebody puts it through, into the system as a requisition. It goes by their supervisor. It's either two or three in the chain, easily two at the least, but if it's over 500, it ends up in my, at the supervisor's level, my level, and then Kathy's level. So we all have to approve it electronically before it goes into a purchase order system. And again, 500, and there are loops in that, too, because I'm perfectly aware some people can play the games on that.
All I'm saying is just, if you're going to buy in bulk, you know, let's make sure that we're doing it, that, let's say, price comparison for a supervisor, for instance, the good old boy systems are gone. I mean, honestly, they're gone. So what I'm saying is, just because I like a certain salesman, I'm not going to buy his product that's 60 bucks more on the clamp, or a valve, or a piece of pipe, I mean, the sky's the limit. All I'm asking for is, if you're going to cut my positions, let's make sure that we're actually taking the initiative to save the city money, whether we have to buy in bulk from a certain supplier and get a few bids. That's it. That's all I'm saying about your PO system.
Oh, yeah. Again, if it goes over 25, it does go out to bid. One of the limitations of course, the salt bin, as you know, is that couldn't fit all the salt we'd ever buy. So we'd have to say, "Okay, we're going to have deliveries at a certain point." The hope is, now that we have a bigger salt bin, we can buy larger quantities, less shipments coming in, because I believe it costs us by shipment as well. So, yeah, we're working on those. And again, as Nancy points out, and I would say, too, if you have ideas, perk them up to us. We're always open to any improvement. Again, we're just looking at our budget, you know, how that works. We've got, you know, it's been, it's, we're actually luckier than most cities, and I say that quantitatively, because it's flat. And I say that quantitatively, because it's flat. We don't know what the university's doing, except they just, you know, made that claim in the paper last week, that they're going to be down in their income, which means we're going to be down. The state, of course, is not, is going to be in an $8 billion budget shortfall. So our local funds, which is what Kathy has put into the mix, 140 or something, I don't know, 700, I think, maybe actually, a lot of that's going to be clipped. We hope not all of it, but we could actually, you know, at the worst-case scenario, they say, sorry, nobody gets anything. It doesn't come to us directly, it comes through the county. So as the county gets walloped on the side of the head by the state, you know, it's going to trickle down to us. And that's why we're anticipating this draconian system. We can always, part of the issue here is, we can always go back to council, say, can we, I'll put that position back in. But the fact is that we have to tighten our belt and do it before it gets, you know, realized, before it gets really bad.
Under ordinance 12210, an ordinance amending the fringe benefit package for non-union personnel within the city of Athens. Member Bain.
Mr. President, 12210 is an attempt to modify the insurance policy that we currently have to make it maybe pay slightly more into the, into the fund. If you look at page nine, you can see at one point, not too distant past, we had, we had two different plans. In one case, the people paid no benefit, I mean, no premium. In the other case, they had no deductible. This is largely in the vicinity of major medical. So we moved a few years ago, I believe Jim and I were in that arm wrestle, in which we, August 1, 2011, employees will pay a monthly contribution equal to 35% of the fixed cost of the health benefits plan. So basically, that's the basis for it. Now, I'm not sure how that will work. I know we just increased the amount we're paying for stop-loss, and we have to pay Harrington, but it will be somewhere in the vicinity of the amount of money. I worked for an institution that never told us how they got the money. Out of the air? There it is, you've got $500 to pay. But we can go with this 35% till someone tells us to change it. I guess it's okay. Anyway, that's what we're, the reason why we gave the salary increases was to require both a premium payment and a deductible from each employee who's on insurance. And I would say that, according to information I got from Ray, thank you very much, Ray, it's about 5, back off of the 167, 10 people don't have insurance, don't use the insurance, they get compensated for that $1,000 that would be, and then 80-plus in each case under A and B. And this will be a way to possibly save money, generate some income. We may, in the future, in fact, in the meeting we had on it, they were talking about raising it, we were talking about raising it to 40% of the fixed cost and 45% of the fixed cost over time. And I guess in prudence, I think that in the future, affordable healthcare is going to require payment for plans that are, at least the auditor's office said in my hearing that they were going to put, they were talking about putting the cost of insurance on the, on the W2s. I don't think it happened this year, maybe it'll never happen, but it would be good to have some understanding of a more reasonable sort of 2012 thing, insurance policy, as opposed to what we have right now.
Further discussion on ordinance 122. Ordinance 12310 is an ordinance amending ordinance 13207, and the Athens City Code Title V, Water and Sewer Regulations, and declaring an emergency. Again, member Bain.
I think I'm talking too much? All right. Where is this? This is an order to be ready for the 1st of January, 2011, in case there are any changes, additions, subtractions. This will not include if we decide to provide water to the woman out on Front Road, because she's already got her application in. Okay, so in the process of doing some work, I found the 1996 study by Jim Norris of our tap-in connection fees, based upon a combination, comparison with Bell Pri and Cambridge and Chillicothe, Galapagos, Lancaster, and so on. That's been contended in court, I don't know how it will come out, I think we're pretty good. Then in March 2009, and if you want to see this, Debbie's going to have it, the city engineer commissioned and we paid for a discussion by Stilton Group, and it was completed in March 2009. And the Stilton Group found that the city could charge up to $4,880 for sanitary sewer connections and $17.45 for water connections. We will be adding stormwater in 2011. Let's get right down to brass tacks. If you read the dispatch, you know that almost everybody who has the sewer system is paying more. Luckily, we've kept ours up to date, as we argued before. You saw the statements, we've been doing clarifiers almost every 10 years and every other part of the system, upgrading it, keeping it up to date. But we still are going to incur higher costs. Therefore, last time I asked, and I think you all either didn't disagree or mentioned it, we're going to, effective January 1, increase our sewer fees, tap-in fees, and of course, should the mayor have, or the service director, now we're at some future point, have a fabulous deal on the southwest side of town, that would be something council could consider and look at. But right now, $3,000 per EPA equivalent will be the charge for installation of a new sanitary tap or connection by the city of Athens. Outside, the cost will be 50% more. And this, these are the numbers that are at the bottom after I got through bragging about how well we've done on keeping our system up to date. $1,300, which was midpoint between the present and the maximum amount that Stilton Group said we could charge, installation of new water taps, connections, and outside the city by 50% in increase. Okay, so you might ask why, and I wish they were over here so I could talk about it a little bit more. I was a little bit annoyed, I will say, when I read in the paper that if you take the counties around us and the county seats and talk about the tap fees or connection fees, you would find that we are very high. Well, you know, when a county seat has 2,500, they are not under the same rules as we are. Guess what? I don't care what eminent scholar says that, it's just bogus. I better stop right now, but you get the idea that we compared both Jimmy Norris in the past and Stilton in the present, similar-sized cities who are under the similar regulations. So if you're a small city like we are, you have to do primary and secondary treatment. If you're a big city, you have to start doing tertiary treatment. Now, what's going to happen to us is, we're going to start doing tertiary treatment, too, I bet. And I think that the city engineer already knows that. We've done some, but we're going to do more in the future. It's the EPA way, you just keep adding requirements, and, you know, and we're going to have a much better sewer system, but we still have to maintain it. And that's what the idea is here. And I put an emergency clause on so we can meet the 1st of January deadline. So it'll be clean. And this is basically our right as a, as a municipality, we have a very good system. It will even smell better in the not-too-distant future in the sewer system. The water system is class, is very well-off, too, but we have to keep working on it. And if you come into the city, you have to pay the fair share of tapping into the system. And so that's what I'm advocating in this particular ordinance.
Other comments on ordinance 123? Yes, member Paul.
I'd like to point out that having an up-to-date and adequate sewer and water system is essential to the economic development of the city. I think having reasonable tap-in fees is completely within the purview of city, because we want to be able to have the capacity and the quality so that we can sell ourselves for economic development. People do not go into cities that do not have water quality, who do not have sewer quality or sewer capacity. So I think that this is just ensuring that we have the infrastructure in order to do economic development in the future.
Are there other comments?
We're a tag team, do you know that?
I guess. On to resolutions for first reading. Resolution 1110 is a resolution to ensure, to ensure local match funds for the mobility manager grant. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. As explained last week, the city of Athens is a partner in a grant that is run through the Hocking Athens Perry County Community Action Agency, and this is for a mobility manager position. It's a five-year grant with the funds originating from the federal government, but then comes down through the State Department of Transportation, and then we have applied for the grant and successfully were awarded that grant. As part of being a partner, we committed the first year to $5,000 in cost share, and then, that was in 2010. In 2011, the cost share is being met by HAPCAP through an AmeriCorps position, and we are now being asked again for 2012 to commit to $5,000 of cost sharing for this program. So this resolution authorizes us to be able to do that in 2012.
Okay. Further comments on resolution 1110? Mayor Wile?
Again, this is looking, we're committing ourselves to $5,000 in the 2012 budget. Okay? I think, I had, I had a discussion with somebody, a citizen, saying, why do we do this? What's the point? And, and, you know, because it's like, okay, it doesn't really help the city. I don't know if that's the best attitude to have. From my point of view, it does help the city to be connected to the county, to raise up the ability of the fellow, our fellow Athenians who are in the county. $5,000 is not a lot to put down for this type of activity. I understand the mobility coordinator, the thrust of that is to actually link us to the rest of the county, enable people who do not have cars to be able to get into the city, get their services, whether medical or employment, which is really where I came around for this discussion. This is one of these discussions on the corner of Court in Washington, so it doesn't, it doesn't get that in-depth. But the fact is, if we, if somebody can get into the city for, for employment, that helps us, that helps them, and it's, it links us with the rest of the county. And therefore, that was my argument when they said, why spend the money on this? If you have a better one, or arguments pro and con, I'm always willing to hear them. But I realize, we're talking about the, not this year, next year's budget, the next one after we're committing to. And I think all in all, it's probably, it's positive.
Further comments? Having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.